Hi.
Hello.
Um, I just sent you guys another email.
Oh, should we check it?
I'll talk about it here. We, we, I'll talk about it once we open the meeting. But it was just one more, one more last minute change there.
Stop. Should I look at it? Is it worth like, should I find it?
It's, it's a deletion. It was the, it's the wastewater bylaw one. We just heard from DEP. And, and we can, we can wait on that one, so.
Oh, okay. I don't have to try and fiddle around and download that.
No, no. So we're down to 20 articles. Oh, actually, I gotta change the numbers on these things.
Oh, geez.
Ah, this is what's happening. Nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16 articles. That's where we're at.
16?
Yep.
Huh, okay.
I have 20. How am I missing? What am I missing?
I had 20 on the most recent two. I gotta go back and look at it.
I definitely have 20.
Yeah, but are you, are you looking at version eight?
I don't know.
Um, are the numbers correct? Like, do they go one in numerical?
Yes.
Standing order?
Yeah, they do.
Do you have citizen petitions on there?
Uh, no, that was taken off.
Yep.
Both of them were taken off. So I have 20.
I'll have to go back and look. Well, whatever it is, we've got a new one, so it doesn't matter.
I'll, I'll resend it here.
Are you just, no.
Hey, guys. And I will share my screen. John?
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
Ah, no problem. I mean, it's okay. We're gonna make it through it.
Are you, after this meeting, are you, are you busy with your regular day job?
So I think I'm gonna be able to incorporate the changes that are here relatively quickly. And hopefully, you know, get one, you know, the, the final letter has been passed out to the rest of the FinCom, but I think it's 99% there. And then the tweaks that I have to do to the book, I think I can do, I don't know, in an hour or so. So my plan is to just jump on it immediately after we're done here. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
And I can, you know, I, I know, so I just sent you the last one and I also gotta just add, give you the, what town meeting will look like type of thing. And we'll get it all formatted and get it out the door.
Okay.
So just to be certain, we're looking at version eight of the warrant?
Version nine.
Oh, version nine.
Version 9.2, actually.
Changes by the minute.
Okay, yeah, I forgot to reorder the numbers on the articles. But we just, I'll explain it once we open the meeting.
I think I opened three versions this morning. Maybe more. Okay, I guess.
I recycle the paper, but I should stop printing them.
I gotta come up with a new naming system. I name everything final and then final. Final, final.
There's never a final.
Final with two stars, final with three stars. We'll call this one final.
Yeah. This is it. It can't change after this one.
Hello?
Jeff?
You can hear you, Jeff.
Okay, my computer got hacked last night. And it is just as dead as a doornail, so I'm, I'm just on dial and audio.
No doubt they wanted all those interesting FinCom files.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
It's, was, it was, it's interesting trying to get onto this meeting. It, anyway, I'm here now.
Lots of people.
Just waiting on Jean. Let me try and call him real quick. I think I could get on video.
There you are, Jeff.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you and see you.
Yeah, all good.
All this on my, on my telephone.
Okay. And how did Billy make up? Oops.
Oops.
Um, just, I just connected with Jean. He's trying to get on right now.
Julie, those are wonderful, the Nahat historical behind you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, they're great to, great to see.
These, these, these folks have kept me company over the last six months. I, I talked to them often. Fortunately, they do not talk back.
That's.
They surround me. They're all over the walls here. I've got all kinds of company that I enjoy. I'm very blessed and happy.
And we are blessed and happy to have you enjoying their company.
Thank you.
Julie, I don't know if you can see this picture right here.
The map?
Yep.
Yep.
That's the historical society map.
Good. Happy to see them there. Do you also have a copy of the, the plans of the town hall, Tony?
I do.
Somewhere, yeah.
I do, yeah. Those, those should be framed.
I thought they were framed. Or maybe that's just my copy. They should be framed, though. Quite a few people here.
Julie, who's the woman?
That is Mrs. Hodges. Her first name is Fannie Gardner White Hodges. Very impressive.
Yes.
Bonnie Dorlando could give you a full history. I see she's online here, but we won't go into that now.
I, you know, I'm all in favor of starting, you know, all public meetings with a little historical information, you know?
I agree. I think that's a good idea.
Well, this is the Hodges room. This is our resource room where people can come and, and do all sorts of research. Open to the public. Well, not currently open to the public, but I'm happy to make an appointment as long as you socially distance from me and wear a mask.
Tony, your office is the old fire station. If you look, you'll see the bells up in the top sort of perimeter of your office.
Yeah.
I remember when the firehouse was in the town hall, or should I say that?
Oh, I didn't.
Dan, I feel like that's coincidentally appropriate.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of alarms going off, I'm sure, and smoke permeating the area.
Is Jean on, Tony?
He's, oh, he's calling my cell phone. Hold on a second.
Hi, Deb.
Is that me, Jeff, or another Jeff?
No, I said Deb. Deb Waters. She's muted right now, but I'm waving. She's waving. One of my favorite people.
And did you say Calanta is home now or almost?
She should be home soon. Whether or not she's going directly to her home, I'm not sure. She may be going to her daughter's home first, so that it's easier for her to access. I'm Calanta's neighbor and Calanta is home.
She is. Thank you, Diane. I know something soon.
She looks terrific. She's happy to be home.
I wouldn't have anything less. She's back in the Nahat air, which is what she wanted. Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Julie. I'm unmuted now.
Yay.
Yeah, one of my favorite too. We have a good crew here.
Thank you.
I feel bad for you all right now. This has been crazy.
Well, you know, i- if it hadn't been crazy for everybody, I would feel bad for us too.
You're right. You're right. The whole world. Yep.
We can call it shared craziness. There you go.
Yeah. Or we could call it something else. I don't know what John would call it.
Careful, I'm writing everything down, Deb, so be careful.
Okay.
Thank you for all your help, Deb.
Oh, yes.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you, guys, for all you've been doing. You've been wonderful, and I know it's been a lot. Hopefully, we'll get through this painlessly. We already had the pain, so the rest should go smoothly.
You'll have suffering to go through. We're done with the pain part.
Yes, true. But then we'll have next town meeting, which I don't even want to think about.
Let's not start.
So are we going to press today? Are you guys planning on that? Is that the hope?
I think we'll make it.
Good. So you're ready?
Yeah. Well, all right, couple, couple of final tweaks, but.
Right.
All right, do we need to call this thing to order first?
I don't, were we waiting on Jean?
Um, you guys can go ahead and call it to order. I, we can too. We have Quorum and hopefully he jumps on. I think he was using the tomorrow night's call-in information, so I just resent him this one and hopefully he gets on soon.
Good. And he can tell us what we're gonna discuss tomorrow.
Okay.
Thanks to see everyone without their mask, too.
Wait a minute, do we have another meeting tomorrow night?
We don't.
Board of Selectmen.
Oh, okay.
John and Bob, if you want to call the finance committees into, into session, then that, then I'll, then I'll call the board, Board of Selectmen's into session.
All right, finance committee meeting. I believe we have a quorum, so present is Vander Slice, Barbara Beatty, John Fulgham. I saw Julie Tarmey run through the list here.
The question is, is one of the call-in people Dana? Okay, so Judy Zahora was not gonna be able to make it, and it doesn't look like Dana Sheehan has called in, so those are the only two of the eight that are missing.
Yeah, Jeff Lewis is here.
Right.
Hey, Jeff Lewis.
Wick Brown.
Excellent, thank you, 'cause it's hard to scroll through this list and get them all. So anyway. Excellent. Thank you, because it's hard to scroll through this list and get them all. So anyway, there, there's a list of attendees. We have a quorum, and we are in session.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Uh, I'll follow Board of Selectmen into session. President is Mark Cullen, and I see Josh Antum.
Yep.
Gene is not on yet, but, uh, we're hoping he'll join us. So we have a quorum, and we're in session. Tony, before we get going, I'd like to just make a, a quick opening comment, um, before we get going. Going to be first say, uh, thank you all to the, to the Finance Committee for all the work that you've been doing over the last couple of months. You know, I've, I've been, I, I spent many nights in that booth down there myself, and I know what you go through, so I appreciate, um, your efforts over the past month. And, um, Tony, I appreciate you and your staff for getting all of this together. Uh, we're, we're meeting today jointly so that we can discuss a scaled-down version of the, the town warrant. You know, I think that I've been thinking about this long and hard over the past few weeks. We all understand that with all of the, with a full warrant as we were proposing, it would probably draw a lot of people, probably in the vicinity of six to 800 people. Um, a lot of people were concerned about that, given the current pandemic, and I don't blame them. Whether their fears were real or deceived, it really didn't matter. Because there is a concern with trying to pull that many people together on, in one time. So we don't have an option about whether or not we can have a town meeting or not, and we need to have a town meeting. The only thing we can do is control the warrant itself, and hopefully by doing so, control the size of the meeting to reduce any possible risk and also to reduce the length of the meeting, so they're not all together for a long period of time. So I feel, um, that it's in the best interest of the town. As a, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I feel my primary responsibility is is the health and welfare of all of the citizens in Nahat, and nothing is, nothing comes second to that. So I think it's a prudent thing to do. Uh, I'm a little disappointed. Two of the major contentious items were probably the eminent domain item and the borrowing item for eminent domain and the, and the Coast Guard housing. You know, I've asked the town administrator to draft a letter to send to Northeastern. I'll ask Tony to share that, um, soon, um, with you all, and we'll share it again tomorrow night. I think we're doing this in an effort to really, you know, listen to the townspeople, um, what they're, what they wanted to see happen, and also to protect them. Protect their health, and I hope, and we'll see over the next week, uh, months, whether Northeastern feels the same about the townspeople as much as we do. I hope they do. I hope they respond to the letter from the town in a positive way, uh, and we can revisit this issue, uh, in the near future. So with that said, Josh or Jane, I, I, you, you might want to comment.
Um, I don't really have anything to add to what you said, Mark.
Is Gene on?
He's not on yet.
Tony, um, would you like to, um, quickly go through that letter, or do you want to wait till later?
Um. Would, do you want to do the warrant first, and then I can, and then I can read the letter, or would you prefer me to read the letter first?
Why don't you just read the letter, then we just get to business and get it done with?
Okay. So this, this letter is, um, will be coming from me to Northeastern, and this is, um, as Mark described, a letter regarding the current pandemic and the difficulty in having a public process surrounding issues that, um, draw a lot of attention and deserve a lot of attention. So this letter, uh, is addressed to Ralph Martin. Uh, dear Mr. Martin, I am writing in regard to the proposed Northeastern University Marine Science Center expansion at East Point in Nahat. As you know, this proposed project has garnered significant public interest. Indeed, any public hearing or meeting held addressing any aspect of the proposed project is usually attended by a capacity crowd interested in all aspects of the regulatory process. As you are aware, due to the COVID-19 emergency crisis, the governor has limited in-person meetings, making in-person meetings or hearings that garner significant attendance very difficult, if not impossible. However, the legislature pursuant to Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 has provided short-term relief for municipalities by allowing meetings and hearings to be conducted virtually, but does not require that hearings and meetings be so conducted. As such, Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 provides that actions required to be taken for said permit be taken within 45 days from lifting of the governor's declaration of emergency. As I indicated above, any hearing or meeting involving the proposed project will garner such public interest that the town will not conduct such hearing or meeting virtually, and instead will wait until, allowed by Chapter 53 of the Act of 2020, until the governor's emergency declaration has been lifted. The town requires that Northeastern recognizes the unique circumstances and challenges facing the town in these challenging times, and commits to refraining from any further filings with the town until such time as in-person hearings can be conducted. Thank you for your expected commitment to suspend filings and site work. If you wish to discuss this matter further, please do not hesitate to contact me.
Thank you, Tony. Very well done. Um, okay, um, Josh, um, have a motion to open the warrant? You're muted.
Muted.
Uh, I move that the, uh, Board of Selectmen vote to open the annual town warrant.
Seconded. Any discussion, any discussion on the matter? Um, Tony, um, okay, um, excuse me, Josh? Nothing?
Uh, no.
Seeing, hearing none? Uh, all of those in favor?
Josh Antum, I.
Mark Cullen, I. The warrant is open. Tony, want to walk us through it?
Sure. What I'll do is share my screen, and once we are, um, through this meeting, we will post uh, this ver- this, um, warrant on the, uh, on Facebook and on the town website. Uh, so as, as, um, the chairman explained.
Tony, can you just zoom in a little bit on the, let's put in the text? Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah, perfect. Yeah.
So as, as the chairman explained, the idea here was to, uh, filter the, the most recent, uh, warrant article by article, and the pulse check really on each article was, you know, can this wait until May? Will this bring a large crowd? You know, does this deserve, is the, is it essential, essentially, uh, essentially, is, is the article essential? So obviously, uh, these first few here, um, we, we would say are essential. So Article one would be the salary classification plan, two is the compensation for elected positions, three prior year bills, which actually we, we likely won't even need. Four is the omnibus budget, five is the water and sewer enterprise account. Um, six is at, equipment and paving. Um, so this is actually money from the retained earnings in the water and sewer enterprise fund. That's part of the omnibus budget in a way, where, um, you know, it's for, if we have a water or sewer break, we use money from retained earnings for those, for costs associated with that and fixing the, fixing any type of, you know, emergency issue. Those are, that's usually more used for like small projects, small emergencies. Um, Article seven is the rubbish enterprise account, and Article eight is Chapter 90 highway. So this is our Chapter 90 money that's used towards, um, used towards paving every year. Article nine is recreation revolving. Ten um, is OPEB, and eleven is stabilization. Twelve is paving. This is an annual article that we do, and, you know, we felt it was essential to continue to, to not fall behind on our uh, five-year paving plan to continue to fund that fully. Thirteen, fire capital. This is a, um, contract obligation that we have with, uh, the city of Lynn for our dispatch services and that we put $2,500 into a capital account, uh, every year. That's part of the contract. Fourteen is sewer capital. So, you know, this is a, this is obviously a large, uh, large sum borrowing. Um, one that, you know, we've been discussing for, you know, ever since I, ever since I got here, I want to say a couple of years now, and, um, really, the the approval that we got from, um, the state revolving fund or, uh, for for, uh, low-interest borrowing, um, for the work to be done on the Linway requires that we take certain steps, uh, in doing that project. There are some deadlines there in order to, um, meet the requirements of that loan program. So it really wasn't something that we can wait until May because of the requirements of that program. Also, uh, there's a ton of work happening on the Linway itself, which is somewhat waiting for our job to get done. And most importantly, you know, we have we've had multiple sewer breaks on the Linway, probably, I want to say, like four, maybe five sewer breaks over the last two, three years on the Linway, where we have such a critical need to repair. So this 4.6 authorizes the borrowing, um, and then, or authorizes the Board of Selectmen to borrow, authorizes the town to borrow to, to move forward on the, on the work that we need to do on the sewer. So it's a, it, it is, in our opinion, an essential article. Understand that, um, you know, being the size of, uh, the sum of money that it is, that it may bring some people out. But it is something that we, we definitely need to get done. Um, and then the last two articles here are continued committees and gifts. So, you know, we don't have any CPC on here. You know, there's a couple other borrowing articles that the town really needed with, um, police radios and municipal software, DPW capital, uh, that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do what we can to get through the next, um, you know, s- several months until May. Um, because we felt like, even though those are essential needs, uh, for the town, there are things that, um, you know, we want, we want people to have the ability to attend meeting and, attend the meeting and vote or debate on those issues. So I think that this is a, you know, this is a very, very pared-down, um, meeting warrant, and I think that we should, we should be able to get through these fairly quickly. In the the next step in this process, uh, for the Board of Selectmen, I think, is to utilize the legislation that allows us to lower quorum for town meeting. Um, there's certain posting requirements and certain deadlines as to when we can take that vote. Um, we can't do it right now, but, um, it is something that if we're, you know, I think over the next month, really educating the public about what the issues that are on the warrant entail, and, you know, that we are, you were, you know, that we're, we're the goal here is to avoid a large crowd, um, but to still be as transparent as possible about what's going to come up at town meeting. So that's pretty much it.
Tony, what would that reduce quorum be? How many people?
10%. So we have, um, 75 is our typical, so it brings us to 7.5, eight people. It looks like Gene is here.
Hi, Gene.
Try to unmute him.
And while you're doing that, Tony, let me just say that, you know, good job. I do agree, Tony, that these are probably the bare essentials. Although, you know, everyone in town is welcome to, um, to join us at town meeting at Flash Road. Our goal is to try to reduce the number, uh, we are exposing. And this will be televised, right, Tony? Town meeting, so people.
It'll, it'll be live streamed.
At home, so it'll be livestreamed at home. Uh, you can, you can at least watch the proceedings at home. If you feel a need to come down, then certainly it's your right to come down, but, um, again, we're, um, we're encouraging participation, but on the other hand, we're, we're trying to, in, you know, to keep the numbers down as best we can.
Uh, Gene is unmuted now.
Hi, Gene.
Yeah, hi, sorry about that.
Okay, um, John, Bob, your, your committee, um, any questions on these?
No, I think, I think, um, I think we've gotten to a place that, um, we can all agree is probably the most prudent and, uh, makes the most sense, so I appreciate that, and, um, you know, as far as communicating the information that's, uh, going to be in the slimmed-down warrant, I, I think we're, you know, we're, we're pushed up against the wall, but I think we're going to be able to make it in terms of, uh, getting the book assembled and to the printer and to the voters in time for, uh, them to think it all over, at least for a week, before, uh, those that do decide to show up, show up. But, uh, I think, uh, I think we're in a, in a reasonable spot.
I, um, I'll also, just so you know, I spoke with Lynn Spencer, uh, the Chair, Chairwoman of the Community Preservation Committee, and we discussed, you know, articles there, um, that may be essential or may not be essential. And I also spoke with Kelly Collins, the Executive Director of Housing Authority, because we were a little, we were concerned about, you know, what their timeline was. They confirmed that they could wait until May, May's town meeting. Um, and I spoke with Debbie, um, earlier today about, you know, our, the, there's the paydown of the bond that was approved last year for library uh, was included in the CPC articles for this town meeting, and, uh, that was also something that we can wait until May to do. Uh, so we should meet, you know, we should, there's no issues there um, on the CPC stuff. We double-checked that. The most recent version I just sent to you all, um, got rid of the wastewater bylaw amendment, because just a moment ago, before this meeting started, uh, we had received confirmation from DEP that it could wait until May, because they're still reviewing the draft um, bylaws and dance scripts on the, on the phone here, if you want to jump in on that one.
Yeah, that, um, that can be put off, because it's best to have the DEP review the vast changes in the bylaws that affects INI and the four, the four dash one ratio. So there's no issue with holding that off for now. We'll be better prepared in the, in the spring.
I'm glad that we got that confirmation from DEP, because obviously any type of like bylaw amendment, um, zoning amendment, things like that are certainly, um, things that we would prefer to have the whole, you know, prefer to have the community have an opportunity to, to voice their opinion on it. So I'm glad we're able to wait on that.
Hey, Tony?
Yes.
Uh, how would you characterize the May meeting? Is that absolutely going to happen in May? Is May, uh, the very last day it could happen, or could we wait even? Is May the very last day it could happen, or could we wait even longer if we wanted
Well, the date, May's, so the date of town meeting is in our bylaws, right? So it has to happen that, that third Saturday in May. But the reason we are-
So when, when you say May, that's actually, that's, that's a May town meeting for fiscal twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay. It's not, it's not part two of this meeting. It's actually next year's meeting.
Well, when it comes to, you know, the omnibus budget and setting the tax rate, you know, making changes, we're gonna set the tax rate after we have this September town meeting. So in May, making changes to the omnibus budget that would affect that tax rate is something that we should avoid. But there are, you know, there is a line transfer article, like we have every year, where we can make changes within, within the current fiscal year. And when it comes to CPC, we certainly can, we may be looking at almost two CPC articles.
Okay.
One for FY twenty-one and one for FY twenty-two.
Okay.
Then certainly-
In, in that May meeting, the, the omnibus that will be voted will be for fiscal twenty-two.
Yes.
Okay. So in a sense, it's, it's kind of both. It's, it's the annual town meeting for fiscal twenty-two and tying up any loose ends that got postponed for fiscal twenty-one this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
Tony, can you comment on the citizens' petitions? When we last kind of talked, it was unclear whether those could be pushed, but they obviously can. Can you talk about-
Yep. So I reached out to the lead sponsor of each citizen petition. And, you know, we talked at length about, you know, the concept here and what we're trying to do with this town meeting and keep it, keep it limited and essential articles only. And I talked to all three lead, lead petitioners, and they've all agreed to postpone until May. So those petitions are not going to be featured on this, on this warrant. I also have a, I have a comment here from Dan Scripp that if the Board, if the Board of Selectmen are okay, he noticed an, an edit that should be made in the Article fifteen, the Continued Committees. As you can see here, we got the wrong year. This should be twenty-twenty-one. And the title of the Coast Guard Housing Committee is actually, I think, Coast Guard Advisory and Design Committee or something like that.
Okay.
So if, if the Board of Selectmen are okay with that, I can make those changes in this, you know, as we, I can make those changes right now.
Yeah.
Yes, too.
Okay, Tony, yeah.
And Tony, it's the Coast Guard Design and Development Advisory Committee.
Design and Development Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or?
I don't have any. Josh, Gene?
No, I'm good.
No, thank you.
Tony, I'm not sure if there's any questions regarding the warrant from the public.
Yes. I also have a comment about Conservation Committee. Dan, should that be Conservation You're on mute, Dan.
No, the Conservation Commission does not have to renew. That's, that's already established. I'm looking for, where is it here? The Conservation? I'm looking for it here.
I'll share my screen again.
Oh, the Confirmation Committee?
Right here.
I see that. I, I don't, well, it was renewed last year, put it that way. And so what's the question from the caller, from the person?
Well, the title of it is the Conservation Commission, not the, not the committee.
Well, the commission doesn't have to renew. That's already, that's established by bylaw. So if this is some other committee outside the commission, then it must be renewed. But if it's, if not the Conservation Commission, it does not have to be renewed every year.
Yeah. The, the, yeah, these are committees that are established by town meeting vote.
So the, if it's some sort of committee, that maybe is, is, is helping the Conservation Commission, and that should be renewed, but not the Conservation Commission itself?
All right. So, I mean, we don't really utilize a Conservation Committee. So I guess it's, it's safe to have in there.
We can always pull it out on the floor if we need to.
I'm sorry that we're making these changes live here. This is, this, this one's always a head-scratcher, yes? Because, you know, going back, looking at, you know, which committees were adopted by town meeting and when. And so this is kind of like a growing list each year.
Tony, my understanding on the committees is that they have to be a committee that produces minutes that are filed with the clerk.
I know that Alternative Energy Committee is defunct.
What is your original thought? Committees that are established at town meeting are committees that need to be continued. Committees such as the Conservation Committee, the Zoning Board of Appeals, those types of committees that are bylaws are not continued every year. They just, yes.
Yeah, they're both, they're-
Is that right, Dan?
Say that again, please, Mike.
I'm saying that the committees that we typically extend each year, our committees are generally established through a town meeting vote for a specific purpose.
Right. That's like a standing committee versus a committee that's, that's accepted through a statute at some point along the line, or is already established through bylaws or the charter.
Exactly. Like the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Conservation Commission, those types of committees.
Yes, yes.
Right. Those don't need renewal, so there won't be-
Oh, really?
In this, in this argument. Gene, I think I'm catching some background noise from, from your call.
It's not for me.
All right. So, you know, this is a meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM. We don't have Citizens Forum on the agenda, but that doesn't prevent it from opening up to the citizens. Would you like me to read? There are some comments on the, in the chat group. Would you like me to go through those before you vote on this?
Yeah.
Vote on this and then go through them.
Yeah, we'll listen.
Okay. Okay. Ken Corangelo, you're the first comment on here. Are you, are you able to unmute?
I think so. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. First, it's written later, but thank you for adjusting the warrant. I think you've made the right choice, as do many others in town here. And thank you for the Citizens Forum, even though it's not on the agenda. One question I had, actually, back when you were talking about the borrowing for this year, how does this 4.6 million relate to the 4.1 million that was approved in the 2018 town meeting?
They get, they get put together for the cost of the, for the cost of the improvement. So of the 4, 4.1 or 4 million, I think, it might have been 4.1, you might-
It's 4052 something, something.
All right. So that was approved and borrowed. That is, has, you know, some of the money of that borrowing has been spent on engineers, survey work, emergency repairs, things of that nature, in order to get us to the point where we are now, where we have repairs, basically. Or I guess originally, we hired, we hired Wright Pierce, the engineering firm, to come in and basically look at our issues, survey our system, and present a, and a menu of options of how to attack all of our issues in our system, prioritize and options within each issue. And what they identified was, from the rotary to the treatment plant, is the most critical need. And the, the most viable option there is to actually align it with a, a plastic structural pipe. That project is gonna cost around six million, maybe a little bit more. So I think we're, we're down, Debbie, do you have, do you know off the top of your head what the balance of that original four million dollars is?
It's around three.
A little bit more than three.
That's been, that's been spent to the three million. That's in hand. So about, so about a million has been spent on, you know, repairs,
engineering, and all that stuff. I think it's like 3.1, 3.2, something like that. So this borrowing-
On top of that, then.
Right. So this borrowing on top of that will allow us to go to award a contract for construction on the Linway, because we don't have enough with the 3.1 or 2, whatever it is, to award a contract. So this will allow us to do that. And it will allow us to design Willow Road, force main repair, and make improvements to the pump station on Ward Road. But this is approved. That sum of money has been awarded by the State Revolving Fund also.
Great. I had some other questions, but there were others that asked in between that one that I asked at 11:25. So-
All right, we'll come, all right, we'll come back to you then.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, good morning, Tony. Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for doing this. I think it's really the right decision. And it's great to hear that we're gonna move forward with the, with the sewer. My, my question has to do with, so I think it's great you're writing this letter. And will you let us know what they say? And if so, how, how would you do that, Tony? Would it be through Facebook or on the website? And, and, and where do we go? You know, how do we know? That's all. What's your response?
I think if we get a response from Northeastern, we'll certainly announce that or read that at a Board of Selectmen meeting. Is that fair to say, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it is. Yep.
And, and we'll, you know, we could post that on the website under our Northeastern dedicated page as well.
That would be great. That would be great. Because sometimes, you know, I, I just, I know myself, sometimes I can't, my first meeting, but it's, sometimes I miss stuff on Facebook. So that would, yeah, that would just be great. Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it.
Tony, Bob Vander Slice, is the letter going out today?
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, the-
Okay. I, I need to know whether to word the FINCOM letter in the past or future tense, that's all. That's not one of the choices.
Yeah, we, well, it, it should go out today unless we, unless we run into some major issues putting the final formatting together for the book, which is the priority, because we gotta get it to printer.
All right. It's gonna be past tense.
Today.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And Tony, do you, I mean, do you, do you expect to hear a, a response? Have, have they been responding to other letters that we've written?
No, they haven't. Not, but they're not really required to respond. You know, this is a, you know, the intent of this letter is to really kind of put it out there to Northeastern, saying, you know, we, your issue deserves a lot of attention, and it's hard to get a lot of attention right now when putting people through a public process is so difficult because of COVID. So we're, we're asking you to, you know, refrain from initiating those processes until, you know, the state of emergency is lifted. So hopefully we do get a response, but it's, you know, I can't really say one way or the other.
Okay.
The, the letter is written in a, in a manner that says that we expect a response. Whether they provide that response or not remains to be seen, but we do expect a response.
Okay. Thanks, Josh. Thanks for clarifying that. And, you know, maybe just asking in the, the letter, you know, please respond. Please get back to us.
Yeah.
Ask for it.
We do, you know, Karen, just also, the part of that letter, what it says there is, the legislature passed Chapter fifty-three of the Acts of 2020, which allows us to hold on having, you know, our, our committees that would receive an application have the ability to hold on, on conducting that public process until the state of emergency is lifted and forty-five days after that.
Yeah.
So, so regardless, you know, we, we intend to utilize that Chapter fifty-three, because, you know, same reason here with the limited warrant, is it's, you know, it's hard to get people together during this time. So-
Yes, I understand. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. Bonnie D. Orlando?
Yes, thank you very much. And I, I just want to say thank you so much to everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Okay. To everybody who worked so hard on, on all of this, all right, to keep us going forward. And my question is, and maybe Dan can answer this best, and that is how can Nahant and other small communities get emergency ballot voting for town meeting articles? Because of the situation where we have town meetings, and this would be across the Commonwealth.
Let me, let me try to answer that quickly, and then I'll turn it over to Dan. I don't know, I don't, Bonnie, it's Mark Cullen, and I don't know of a mechanism to put article, to take articles in a warrant and put it on a ballot. I just don't know of a process to do that. I don't believe there is one. There is a process to allow non-binding, for a community to have non-binding referendum questions. For example, the, the main one would not be a non-binding question on the ballot. So I don't, unless, unless town council can show me another way of doing it, I don't believe there is. Dan?
Well, first of all, by, what do you mean by emergency ballot voting? I'm not-
In other words, during the pandemic, okay, we, a lot of, a lot of municipalities in Massachusetts have already voting in a re-reduced manner, or they, you know, through selectmen, you know what I mean? And so many, like Swanswick, for example. All right? So that's a smaller group. Then, you know, you, they, or they may have a mayor and a city council and that sort of thing, and things are passed through that way. All, all across Massachusetts, you have smaller towns who have to have an open town meeting.
Right.
Which they use. Now, to substitute for that, is, considering the pandemic, is there any way that we can get emergency ballot voting for town meeting warrant articles?
When you say ballot, when you say ballot, there are two different ballots that issue here. One is like a town election. There's a ballot there. But there's also a ballot that needs to be taken when things like salaries are appropriated. Do you mean the latter or the former?
I would, I would say both. You know what I mean? Especially in this case where you've got, where you've got- Especially in this case where you've got, where you've got town meeting articles that need to be passed that are absolutely vital to the town moving forward.
Well, a lot of this is governed by statute in terms of what needs to be on a paper ballot at a town election. What I think you're more getting at is ballots at town meeting, and we do have now an electronic system where balloting is replaced, paper balloting is replaced by that, and that is almost instantaneous. That will, I'll review the past two town meetings and it will shave, this electronic balloting will shave off, well, this is abbreviated agenda anyway, or warrant anyway. But in a typical town meeting, it would shave off at least an hour, if not more. Um, so I think that might be getting to your point in terms of ballot.
Hey, Dan, I, I think Bonnie is actually talking about former.
Yeah, I do too.
Well, that's governed by statute. I, I don't think we have the discretion to take things off the article and put them into a paper ballot form at a town election.
So in that, so in that case, uh, it would be the legislature or, or could, could the um, could the Secretary of the Commonwealth do this? Or does it, is a legis, legislative thing, is, is the governor got any emergency powers in this respect? Do you know anything about that?
I have to look into that more, Bonnie, but my gut reaction is no, you'd have to go to the legislature and speak special, or seek special legislation, like has been done over the past few months.
Yeah.
Uh, on a number of occasions.
Okay, cuz I would think at the present time, I think we have to be very careful because at the voting situation across the country, people feel as if they being deprived of a vote because they can't get out or they're afraid to come out to, to be able to vote on something, and that is a very serious thing.
Agreed. Yeah, you're absolutely right, Bonnie.
Bonnie, I, I will say that um there was legislation proposed to uh to allow for open town meetings to be held via Zoom or remotely.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of debate at the legislature through the Mass Municipal Association and the um Moderators Association, um basically arguing against open meeting having that ability. Um, because of what you just said, you know, where it's hard to um certify that the people voting remotely are in fact, you know, registered voters of the town. Uh, whereas a representative town meeting, you know um exactly who's elected to uh make votes and you can certify that those are the people, you know, participating in the remote um in the remote meeting, and even that was somewhat of a contentious issue, but they got that through.
Okay, so what I'm saying is if we had a paper ballot sim, similar to an election and we could just scope this off saying, yes, I agree to this, yes, I agree to this, et cetera, then
So there's, there's, you know, the Roberts rules, and with open town meeting government, the intention of it is to have, you know, live action, live debate.
Right.
Um, of the, of the citizens or of the res, registered voters of the town. And so by doing it by ballot, you kind of eliminate that, that essential part of open government.
I understand. I'm just asking for it on an emergency basis, you know what I mean?
That's nothing the town can do, Bonnie. That's gotta come through the legislature.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's a great question though.
To know how, how we, how we proceed. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
It is a great question. We've gotten it a couple times already. Um, unfortunately, it's not something we can do, but on our own, but it is a great question.
Thank you.
Um, Ken Corangelo?
Uh, so back to, okay, so these are three of, in, in no particular order, but just for clarity. Um, and again, thank you for just in Warren. Uh, was the town moderator consulted in the deliberations about the warrant, the timing, the meeting itself?
Yes.
And, and at what point in the process?
Throughout. Throughout the entire process. I mean, um, it's his meeting and the clerks, so um I mean, as far as um the logistics go regarding the town meeting and then um the, the warrant is controlled by the Board of Selectmen, so providing updates to the moderator as we went through that process.
Okay, so the trade-off between the size and complexity of the warrant and logistics and all that, you discussed that with Dave from the beginning?
Yeah, I mean, I guess not, yes and no. I mean, not specifically like that. It's not kinda how it worked. Um, it was more so talking about the logistics of the meeting, which changed based on what was in the warrant. So as, as we were having those discussions, that, I kinda went hand in hand, but it wasn't like um I don't know, I forget how you, how you asked the question.
Just comes, ongoing consultation as things evolved?
Yes, throughout.
Okay, uh, shifting to uh Northeastern for a second. When was the last actual meeting held between any of the current selectmen and Northeastern?
When was that, Tony? Um, um, May, maybe? I'm not sure. Maybe even earlier.
Recent, you mean, or more later?
The last time, the last time uh that Town Council, uh KP Law, myself, you um had, were on a call with Northeastern to begin negotiations.
Um, Jeff Blake's on the call too. He may, he may recall when that was.
I, I believe, uh, Mark, you're right. I believe it was either early May or late April.
Yeah.
Okay, and were the, was, and apologies if it's out there, is that, is that referred to or summarized in minutes somewhere?
It may be referred to, but it wasn't a meeting of the entire board.
Okay.
So it, it didn't, it didn't require open meeting law. Um, and it was, it was, I think probably protected under, you know, litigation um elements of that part of the open meal. Am I right, Jeff?
Yeah, possible settlement.
Okay, and that's May of 2020?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Inch, different topic. Uh, again, what happens to the CPC monies that would have been allocated, uh, had we done that article during the period covered by the ATM? Did they just sit in a reserve fund until next ATM?
I think, you know, Deb and I talked about this a little bit. Deb, feel free to chime in. Um, there is a requirement that 10% go into the three different categories. So regardless of the vote, that would happen anyways. Um, but
Yeah, and the remaining goes into their general reserves.
Okay, so it's not, it's not spent, in other words, there's no, it doesn't get spent.
But it'll be available to be used at the next town meeting.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, thank you. And while I'm here to just add to this last one, um, can the uh, the book, the Finance Committee book be made available by PDF on the town website at the same time that it goes to the printer?
Absolutely. Absolutely. The uh, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna try to go overboard with um, you know, education and uh, of, of the town meeting and, you know, because we want, especially in a, in a, in an awkward scenario where we're kinda trying, we don't want a lot of people to be there because of public health reasons, but we also want people to understand, you know, what's gonna be on the warrant, what's being voted on and, and that they have, you know, and that it's set up in a safe way that if they feel comfortable going, that they can. Um, so, you know, if we, at, at, you know, I think if, we gotta start by just putting as much information out there as much as we can and as much as possible, so.
Yeah, I'm sure, you, you, people have a couple more weeks to look at it, um, chronically that way, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I wish that was the uh, I wish that was the uh, I wish that met our requirement. It'd be a lot easier, save a lot of money.
20, 2035 or so.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Okay, Alice Court?
Yes, hi. Thanks for uh having this meeting. I um wanted to know if the Board of Selectmen is committing to call for a special town meeting urgently should Northeastern not agree to the requests in the letter or just begin to file for additional permitting to move forward on their expansion as it has already filed for a Conservation Commission permit? And if so, and if this occurs in winter, how would the town propose to hold the meeting that would be required safely indoors or outdoors? Or at least as safely as the design of the currently scheduled town meeting? I understand that the governors or the, the state um emergency rules say that you uh have 45 days. So the point is if the governor lifts that um obligation sometime during winter, um, the town would presumably only have 45 days with, in, during which, you know, or in which to respond um by holding a town meeting. Thanks.
Let me take this, Tony. Chris?
I can, I can, yeah, go ahead. It's your, your meeting.
Um, let me say a few things about that. I think it's a good question, Alice, and I see that there's other questions in this chat room that's related to that. I, as one, don't plan on sitting on my hands and allowing Northeastern to use the pandemic as a way to not allow the town to vote the way it should on these matters. I will do whatever I need to do as a member of the Board of Selectmen to make sure the town has a say in that. Now, I am comfortable with the fact that I don't think this emergency order from the governor is gonna be lifted anytime soon. Schools will be opening, uh, colleges are coming back. Things are not necessarily getting better and I just can't foresee the governor raising, lifting that emergency order anytime soon. Um, and if he did and Northeastern decided to, again, to file, then the 45 days begins the process. Um, I think I'm, I'm fairly comfortable that that would probably bring us into the spring. Um, and if that's the case, yes, I would, I would ask for a special town meeting if necessary.
So if you, I would just add that, um, agree, Alice, it's a great question. Um, Chapter 53, we believe, um, allows us 45 days after the state of emergency lifted to begin the process of hearing any of those applications. So um, you know, the um process of the Conservation Commission has, has a timeframe included in it. Site plan review has a timeframe, building inspector, CBA, you know, those all have timeframes, so um, those would be, if applications were submitted, if the state emergency was lifted, those actions would begin within 45 days. Also, if the, you know, the state of emergency is lifted, then conceivably that's because it's safe to conduct public meetings or group gatherings indoors or in that manner. So we should, you know, if, we should be covered. We should be completely covered in that, in that sense.
So if they file a um request for a permit, even if the governor does not list, lift the emergency order, um, you can postpone it until the governor lifts the order. Is that correct?
We believe Chapter 53 of the Acts of 20 allows us to, to uh, to hold on the public process surrounding that application.
And so, the, which is essentially what the Conservation Commission did at its last meeting. And then, after that 45-day limit um is up, then the other permitting boards have the 30 days or the two weeks or whatever their next meeting is before it, because I understand that some of the boards say if, if they don't respond by a certain period of time, it's assumed to be an approval.
Exactly.
So is that a 30-day time period beyond the 45 days? Is that, that what you're explaining?
Exactly, so um, when you have, you're right, so in those processes, it says um that the board or committee shall respond within X timeframe, otherwise it's deemed approved. What Chapter 53 actually says, which I can, I think I may even have it up here, actually says is, "A requirement of a statute, ordinance, bylaw, rule, or regulation that a hearing commence within a specific period of time after the filing of an application or request for approval of a permit, permit shall be suspended as of March 10th, 2020, provided however, that the applicable period shall resume 45 days after the termination of the state of emergency." And then further, it says, "No permit shall be considered granted, approved, or denied constructively or otherwise due to a failure of the permit granting authority to act within the time required by statute, ordinance, bylaw, rule, or regulation, provided however, that the permit granting authority acts within 45 days of the termination of the state of emergency." So we read that as governor lifts the state of emergency, we have 45 days to initiate the process that you would typically undergo uh once an application is submitted.
Tony, Tony, is the timeframe's different for each of the boards and committees?
They are. They are. Um, the Conservation Commission, when they receive a notice of intent, which they have, um, I believe, you know, I'm not sure if it's bylaw or statute or ordinance, but I believe it's, they have 21 days to uh begin the review process. Then there's really kind of a um review process that begins there. Um, which doesn't really have a specific timeframe, but um it would probably be a month or two. Um, and then they have 21 days to make a determination once they've completed their review process. Um, Planning Board has 60 days on site plan review and Building Inspector has 30 days to review a building permit application. Um, and then um, I guess if, if, if a, if a determination was appealed, there's another timeframe, you know, on that appeal process as well.
Tony, let me just add that, all of those committees, it, it's sequential. They're not running in tandem.
Right.
So um, it's quite some time. Uh, Jeff Blake, um, I know Town Council is here, uh, from KP Law. Were we missing anything here, Jeff?
I, I, I don't think so, Mark. Um, with respect to whether or not it's in tandem or at the same time, I think the ConCon um may be able to run it in, at the same time as some of the other stuff, but your bylaw is very specific with respect to site plan review of, of even educational uses, and it says, "No permit shall issue," and there's up to 60 days to make that determination and then 30 days on the building permit, so that's a period of at least 90 days before any permit could be issued.
But i, is it very clear that the clock does not start ticking until the governor's 45 days are up? Or if Northeastern files things now or in the, in next few months, as it has with the Conservation Commission, that the clock has already begun so that when the uh governor um sets its, lifts the emergency order, that the clock is already set back? Do you understand what my question is? I may not agree.
I, I, I think I do. It's called a tolling statute, which means it tolls all deadlines, which means they don't start to run. So to answer your question, first of all, it's a brand-new statute. There's absolutely positively zero case law on it. But the, and, but the intent of the statute is to do just that, is to toll, so that we don't have a situation where towns are inundated with requests or permit applications and then, you know, like, w, w, if we got one on May 1st and there's a 30-day uh requirement to act, so the day that the governor lifts it, um, that the, the permit would be due or the action would be due, no, it's giving you a little bit of leeway in between there and whatever No, it's giving you a little bit of leeway in between there, and whatever action needed to be undertaken, that deadline, that, that, that timeframe would start to tick. So, so you're not gonna, if, if there's an application for a building permit tomorrow for, you know, pick something, a, 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 a multi-unit house down in, on, uh, on one of your streets, and the town doesn't act on that building permit, when the governor lifts his order, it's not, you, you don't have to act on it immediately, you will then have your thirty days to do the, the requisite due diligence and determine whether or not permit should issue.
I just want to add, I just want to add one thing, um, which is that if for some reason or other, some of these, um, these requirements are not perfectly airtight, or and, and Northeastern, um, in advance, I would do everything I possibly can to make sure that people of Nahat have a chance to vote on this issue, um, and, and make sure the democratic process is followed. I won't stand by idly and let Northeastern do what they want to do without giving the people of Nahat a chance to vote on the fate of their town, East Point, and all the resulting implications of development.
All said, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is, um, and Corangelo, but he already asked, that was his question about the ATM book being made available as a PDF, which we already answered yes. Um, next is Michelle Capano.
It was just a comment, Tony, you don't need to read it.
Okay. Um, next is Tommy Oscar.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just my question is, why a article can't be added to the warrant that says, let's move articles X, Y, and Z to a paper ballot to be determined by the town clerk or the Board of Selectmen?
Because we're not legislatively allowed to do that, Tom.
You can't amend.
That'd have to be, that'd have to be a change in legislation to allow the town to do that.
A motion can't be made at this con meeting to move articles X, Y, and Z.
Well, you can, you can put it to, you can put it to a ballot at the town meeting, and we could do it electronically, but if you're asking if we could take a warrant article and have the clerk have an election over that article, I don't believe there's a mechanism for doing that.
You don't believe there is, or?
I don't know of one, let me say, I, I don't know of one, and I've, I've been in this business for over twenty years, and I, I think I would have known by now, so.
Isn't this exactly the same question as Bonnie asked, essentially, the ten?
Yeah, same question.
Not the same question.
Mark, you're right, the, the town doesn't have the ability to make that call, that's a legal legislative determination that has to alter state statute. The town meeting is a legislature for the town, but not the Commonwealth, so we would be restricted from doing that, unfortunately.
So you're telling me on the floor of the town hall, or the town meeting, that an article can't be amended and, and moved to a paper ballot? And that's never been done, is that what you're telling me?
Well, when you say paper ballot, again, there are two types of ballots, there's a town election form of ballot, and there's a ballot on town meeting floor. So which one are you talking about?
Town election.
No, you can't do that, that's not within our.
So that it appears on a town-wide ballot?
Not unless there's support for in the, in the state law.
Would it be voted on, on the floor, at the annual town meeting?
That, that town meeting doesn't have that power. They don't have the authority to do that.
To amend an article?
Of course they can, they cannot amend an article to send it to town election ballot, no.
So, you know, Tommy, I think one of the things that you heard earlier is, you know, you could put a, you could, you could copy and paste the town meeting warrant article and put it on a ballot, um, but it'd be non-binding. The binding vote, the determining, the, you know, the, the factor of determination has to, has to occur live in open session with forum at town meeting. It has to be that way, that's the way, that's the proper procedures of the state.
Yeah, I understand that. So at the floor of the town, somebody gets up and says, I want to amend article X, Y, and Z. A town-wide election to be determined. A town-wide vote, let's say, not election, a vote.
Outside of, no, the answer is no, you can't do that.
All right. Counsel, you want to, is that?
Yeah. Unless, unless there's support in the state law, um, unless you're talking about a CPA article, or some sort of prop, two and a half, things like that, it doesn't belong on a warrant for town election. Uh, section nine of our, our bylaws regarding town meeting allows you, twenty-five members to convert a, an oral or verbal vote to a paper ballot, but that is not town election, that's at town meeting on the floor.
Right, I understand that, I've seen that done, but there's no way you can move it from floor vote to a town-wide?
Unfortunately not, Mr. Oscar, that, um, that, that, like Tony said, it's, some of these things need to be decided right away so that action can be taken immediately. But without the support of the legislature from this Commonwealth, we don't have the power to do that.
I mean, even a non-binding question would, would be of some help moving forward, I would think.
I don't know how to answer that.
You could, you could do a non-binding question. Um, there's, I'm sure there is a a petition process that the clerk could provide, um, some information on how to, on how to do that.
But you would still have to take a vote at town meeting, and that would.
Yeah, it would be not, no, it'd be not, it would be non-binding.
That wouldn't be of any help in this situation, I guess.
The vote would already be taken, and it would be in effect, so the subsequent paper ballot at town election would be really worthless, because the vote's already taken, action's already being done. It's not as if you can independently, you know, indefinitely move and then wait for town, the town election ballot to be decided and, and calculated, and then come back to town meeting, that, that wouldn't work either.
All right, thank you very much. I guess the answer is no. Can't be done. In these prime times, we can't come up with some unique solution to move this forward. Thank you.
Okay. Diane Monteith?
Hi, yes, I just wanted to know if, um, a Northeastern representative is on call, if they'd like to identify themselves?
Uh, we don't know. Um, it doesn't have, you know, like, I don't have any, anything on my screen.
No logos or anything, Tony? You can't see any logos or anything?
No.
It would just be nice to know who's on the call. Um, if they were in person, we would be able to see that, and, um, perhaps they'd speak up and say something.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry, we don't have the answer for you. And Ken, do you have, Ken Corangelo, did you have any final thing?
Yeah, just following up, I, to, to, to super clarify, I think what Tommy was, was trying to ask. Dan, you're, you're, you're saying that there is no way to enfranchise people who are not physically in the room at town meeting to vote on the, an article on a town meeting?
Yes, I am saying that. There are over two hundred and sixty open town meeting forms of government in the Commonwealth. Each one of those have to have their open town meeting, uh, in person, they cannot do it remotely. As Tony mentioned, the, the greatest stretch of remote participation only applies to representative town meeting, like our example over in our neighboring town of Swambsk. But there, oh, the, the best that we can do, and that we are prepared to do, is to televise the town meeting so folks can, at the very least, listen in. And then, and then go from there. Now, there, there is a section in our bylaws that allow for folks to speak on behalf of someone else. Uh, so to the extent that, then it can exercise their rights that way, that's already in place. But then they cannot do its vote, that, that, that's black and white, unfortunately, but, uh, if someone wants to speak on behalf of someone else, that, there's an avenue for that, but that's a normal course of town meeting, that's nothing special catered to this issue.
Understood. So the hundred-five-year-olds could send, their, their, their child could speak on their behalf but not vote on their behalf?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Uh, two things with that. If the person is a resident of the town, they can speak as a matter of right. If that person is from out of town, they'd have to get the moderator's permission.
I'm assuming the both, assuming the hundred-and-five-year-old and child are active registry voters.
Okay, yeah, then that would be fine, that, that, but that's always been the case, Ken.
I'm just clarifying, the, the answer still appears to be no, but just want to clarify, thank you.
Hey, that looks like about it, Tony.
That's it, I'm, um, typing up a motion for you. I can just read it. Um, so, we haven't put a motion on the floor yet, but it'll be something along the lines of I move to amend the warrant for the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty annual town meeting as presented by the town administrator, and send it to the Finance Committee, Advisory and Finance Committee.
Josh, could you make that motion as read?
I move that the Board of Selectmen amend the town warrant as just reviewed and submit it to the Advisory and Finance Committee.
Second on that motion?
I'll second that.
And second, any further discussion on the motion? Being hearing none, all those in favor?
Josh Antrimai?
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, an aye. Okay, John and Bob, you have a, an abbreviated warrant?
Thank you very much.
Yes, well, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Um, we have, we have, but I, I put the, um, budget as a option on the warrant, uh, uh, on the warrant, on this agenda, but we don't need to make any changes to it. And the other thing on the agenda was the letter, which we've already discussed. So unless the Board of Selectmen have any other business that they want to raise, we're, 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 uh, we've completed it, but, or the FinCom too, it is, you guys have a meeting posted as well.
Yeah, I, I would just, uh, want to know from you, just clarification on the final logistics of, of getting the book together, so as I understand it, we're going to finish our, uh, letter, I'm going to update the warrant with the changes that have been voted. Uh, I'm going to compile those into the PDF booklet, and then I'm going to send that to you slash Bobby Joe, and you're going to get it to the printer, or were you expecting me to talk to the printer?
Um, also add in there the what to expect at town meeting?
Yeah, yeah, that, yep, that too, yeah.
I don't, uh, either, I'll find out from Bobby Joe.
Okay.
I assume you and I will jump on the phone a couple times today, so.
Okay. All right.
So I will resend, um, the annual town meeting warrant, final, final version to you.
Ultimate.
And, um, and I'll send over the what to expect, and, um, and then we will, I guess, wait to see your draft back, but call me if you need any, any help.
Okay, okay. Let you do it.
Um, Tony, we need a motion to close the warrant, do we? We accept it, do we close it? Josh, if we could close the warrant? You muted it.
Again, I make a motion that we close the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion is admitted, or I have a second?
Seconded.
And seconded, any further discussion? Seeing here and none, all those in favor?
Josh Antrimai?
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, an aye. If that's it, we can adjourn the, um, the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and then the FinCom can do the same if they want. Josh?
Are you, are you, oh, okay, yeah, sorry. I move to adjourn the Board of Selectmen meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Josh Antrimai?
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, an aye, the Board of Selectmen is adjourned.
So the fellow Finance Committee members, is there anybody who, uh, wants to say anything before we move in that same direction?
Only thank you for all the hard work that everybody has put into this, thank you so much.
You know, thank you. She's the last, yes.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you Debbie, too, and Legal, and Volunteers.
So, so as far as the Finance Committee goes, one thing, we don't have any meetings scheduled, so I'm just thinking maybe I'll put one on the books for next Wednesday. The very least we can do is, uh, get together and approve the last set of, uh, minutes that have not been approved to be posted. Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
While you're on the phone here, too, um, the week before town meeting, so maybe, um, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, we should post a joint meeting, um, of the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the moderator, uh, and the town clerk, just to go over the, our typical moderators' meeting. Um, that'll just, you know, just go over, um, you know, the Roberts rules and what's required, majority vote, two-thirds vote, that type of thing, just the process of how town meeting's going to run. So if you guys could just keep that in mind, figure out which day works best for you, and, and I can work with the moderator and the Board of Selectmen to get that scheduled.
Okay. So it's, uh, I think we're ready to, uh, accept a motion to adjourn the Advisory and Finance Committee meeting as well.
I move that the Advisory and Finance Committee adjourn.
I'll second that.
Folje, am I?
Beatty, aye.
Louis, aye.
Charmy, aye.
Yes, that's it, I think Bob, Bob had to drop off, so I guess that's everybody.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.